So the September 20th meeting of the Rockport School Committee is now in session. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded for future viewing. First item is approval of minutes from September 6th, which we were all here for, assuming everybody had a chance to review those. Are there any requests for amendments or corrections?
No.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
A second.
All those in favor? Hi. Great. Public comments. So this is a chance for anyone in the audience to speak to any item on the agenda if they choose to do so. I don't know. So I'm looking out into the one member of the audience.
The hot seat.
Apparently not, okay.
I might when you're finished with the meeting, I might. Would you want comments about this whole thing now?
Yes, yes. And actually, if you could come up to the microphone, we'll activate that so we can actually hear you, because...
And Jessica.
I'm Gary Weems, and I just have some questions about the scope of the committee. Do we do the hiring and firing, et cetera? I mean, what is the scope of the committee? What responsibilities does it really have?
So our role is maybe most easily described as oversight of the chief executive of the school. So we hire, in terms of hiring, we hire the superintendent, we hire the director of student services, but in terms of any of the administrative staff, the teaching staff, the support staff, that falls within the purview of the administrative staff. So in some cases, the superintendent, in some cases, the principals.
I just didn't know what the scope of the authority was of the board itself, how much, you know, influence you might have over, let's say, curriculum or what's going on in the schools. As a citizen, naturally, I'm concerned a little bit about some of the things I've heard that might be going on in schools, and I'm just here to see if that's going on.
Sure, no, that's, that's a great question.
I mean, I think it's a little bit strange, for example, that grade schoolers are being, you know, completely immersed in sexuality, which is something we never had as grade schoolers. This didn't happen to us. We didn't, we're, teachers didn't have any business looking at our genders or any other part of our. They taught us geography, history.
Right.
Mathematics, et cetera. This is what the job was for grade schoolers.
Sure.
You know, I'm just concerned that this kind of thing might be going on, and that's what I'm trying to find out.
So, so quite literally, in terms of curriculum, we provide oversight, but the state has very carefully dictated how involved we get in that. And for that, we have curriculum directors, we have oversight over the superintendent and the principals, over the superintendent who oversees the principals, the teaching staff. But one of the things I often say at this meeting is the people who know what is going on today in children's lives, they're not us. Our view of elementary school is 20, 30, 40, 50 years out of date from what's actually going on now.
I hope so.
People who really know are the teachers, and the people who support them are the curriculum directors, the psychology staff. So I understand what you're saying, and I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent in a minute, but I want to make sure that I also don't look like I'm just handing off a tough question to the superintendent.
You should.
I think the, I think you would be astonished if you went into any grade level of any school in 2023 to see what the kids are dealing with, the sort of memories we have, maybe happy ones of what happened 50 years ago, at least for me. That's not the world these kids operate in. A lot of these kids have tremendous anxiety from the world they're living in. They're dealing with very complicated personal lives that we don't see, when we see them jumping happily down the street.
It's different from what we had to deal with.
Well...
We had nuclear threats, we had to duck under our desks, et cetera.
I think it's very different, but I think that's also, it's a debate that's outside the purview of what public comment relative to the agenda that's been posted is. So I'm going to let the superintendent speak, but I would just say, if you talked to a school psychiatrist, they could, in a general way, tell you how it's different from what we experienced years ago.
Thank you. So I'll start with the curriculum questions. So if any community member ever is curious about the curriculum, the scope of coverage, that's an easy meeting that we can either set up with principals or myself or curriculum directors. We're becoming more and more transparent in this district. We're starting to put all of our curriculum overview documents on our website. So this is, I'm just entering my second year here, so this year, one of the goals is to make sure that we have curricular overviews on the website transparently for community members and families. The chairman is correct, the state of Massachusetts by law has a Department of Education, they establish what the curriculum frameworks are, and the local school district sets up the scope and sequence and the how aspect of implementing those frameworks. So the example you gave, the Board of Ed just voted on brand-new health and wellness curriculum frameworks. That's why it's all over the Boston Globe, that's why it's all on social media. It literally, I believe, was voted on yesterday. It's been over 20 years, 1999, more than that, since those frameworks have been updated. So I think what some people are reacting to is the public release of a new set of frameworks in the area of health and wellness. All school districts, including Rockport, are going very slowly right now. We have to take a dive into those, we have to take a look at what the state is asking us to do, and then we're going to put curriculum teams together in our health and wellness department to decide how best we're going to implement those frameworks. We don't have an option to not meet them or meet them.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Another question. Now, what's often happening in these school districts is that children, let's say, want to have transgender because they're children, and say, gee, maybe I'd like to be a girl, maybe I'd like to be a boy. The next thing you know, they're being, you know, encouraged not to tell their parents, but to keep it a secret, and to do things that are very harmful perhaps to these children. Is this going to happen here?
So I'm just going to speak that there's not a lot of actual information being discussed, and we might not want to stay on the topic that's as far off the agenda.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, that's an opinion, that's not fact, and I think it's really outside the purview of the items we have on the agenda are really what public comment are designed to address.
I see, so this is a question that shouldn't be asked.
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, I'm sorry, may I be misunderstood?
The role of public comment at the school committee is to address items that are on the agenda so that the school committee can have the full spectrum of opinions before deliberating and voting on an issue. There are no issues on the agenda currently that match your description, but I would also say, I find your description personally to be extraordinarily lacking in fact.
Well, I hope so. I would like to be wrong. I would like to think that parents are going to be informed if there's anything going on like this, that the parents should be in charge of the children. That's the way I see it.
Well...
So I hope I'm, I hope I'm wrong.
You're...
So all I can say is we have a, we have a very strong partnership between our parent community and our school community, and we try to be better tomorrow than we are today when it comes to those relationships. And ultimately, there will be an agenda item, I would suspect, on a curriculum update. So if you're watching the agendas during the school year, you will most likely see a curriculum update.
Okay.
And I would encourage people to come and pay attention to those updates.
And I just, if I could reiterate as well, that the Department of Education lists the frameworks for, that provides teachers, students, and families with clear and shared expectations for what all students should know and be able to do it at the end of each year. So that's the, the language I just read from the Department of Education site. So I would encourage anybody who has questions to go to that website and take a look at those frameworks, because they do a very nice job of listing what the frameworks are for every single grade level and subject. So I think it's a really great resource for people to take advantage of.
And that, what again, was...
The Department of Education.
Okay, their website.
Yeah, their website, yep.
Take a look at it?
Yep.
I guess that's pretty much what I have to say.
I mean, I would like to thank you for coming here, because often we'll get commentary in social media making a case that then we're supposed to, I guess, argue back out of a hole from, and I think that's part of the concern in addressing some of the issues you're talking about, where you're presenting something as potentially a fact when it isn't in our experience. So I'd be more than happy to talk to you when we're done with the meeting, but because it doesn't really influence any debate we're having tonight...
Didn't you come here to disrupt the meeting?
No, 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 and we're very happy that you're here, because we don't often get people coming in and sharing opinions and sharing concerns. It's just a little outside of the scope of what we're talking about tonight. It's not forbidden. Happy to talk with you later as well, if you feel like staying.
That's why I thought maybe afterward I was...
Sure, okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I know we lugged you up in front of the microphone, we were so excited.
Okay.
All right, so if you could just touch that button, yeah, then we won't get a lot of feedback. All right, so correspondence, none at this time.
None at this time.
Personnel, none at this time. Student Advisory Committee update, now that was something that had a lot of interest.
So we have, yeah, so we have Anna Drost with us again tonight, I got that right, Frost, Drost. I fixed it, Frost and Drost, see, I'm getting there. I'll get it perfect next time, I promise. So Anna's with us tonight. I'm going to give a quick process update, and then Anna will talk us through where the high school is at that level of process, and then if you have other updates in the school district, that'll be great. So what you have in your drive and on the screen is the language straight from MGL that just talks about the SAC or the Student Advisory Committee and the expectation of the state and how this is intended to empower student voice and to give them, we were just discussing this, that I have a child in my house who's a senior in high school and who is very involved in political science and American government initiatives, and it's intended to give students with that lean an opportunity to represent the student body and get a flavor for the political process and to be a representative at the school committee level. In Rockport, that has sort of ebb and flowed throughout the past so many years with high membership, low membership, different hierarchical situations. We also recommend strongly that there's an advisor of the organization, similar to every other program at the high school. So Ms. Rose and I have spent some time talking about that, and if you take a look at some of the FAQs that have come out on this, I think through your organization, actually through MAS C, one of the places where we have been inconsistent is around the committee, you know, having some kind of liaison or representation back to the team. So I think after Anna discusses the process that they're going through to put the team together, Ms. Rose, the advisor, and the leadership team's next steps, in my understanding of what's going to happen, is that they will come together with some kind of meeting schedule, whether that's twice a month, three times a month, whatever they determine. And my recommendation is that the principal attends one a month, so that there's a through line between the principal and the leadership team at the student level. And then the statute or the recommendation for school committees is that you go every other month, and in best practice, in a lot of places, is they, similar to other liaisons, they pick a liaison, so you're not breaking open meeting, public meeting laws. So you pick one liaison to go shoulder to shoulder with the principal every other month, and then when we report back out. So I think that's the recommended process that I'm going to be asking the committee to take part in, and then Anna, and her team is frantically trying to get through the election process. So why don't you talk through the election process, what you've done, what you're doing tomorrow, and then I'll take it away and I'll stop.
So yesterday, we held elections to fill the other three seats in our committee. Four people gave speeches, and we're hearing, we're waiting to hear back. We should be hearing back on those results tomorrow morning, and we'll be, hopefully, if it's along with the laws here, doing a rotation where people, different members can come in, have this experience, share what we're supposed to be sharing, and just give everyone equal opportunity for it.
So that's one of the places where I'm going to ask that the committee be a little flexible. By rule and practice, they say that the team elects a chairperson, and that the chairperson then is the one who represents at the school committee. I would love, and Ms. Rose and I would love to see that rotate, so we have more leaders at the student level, experience public leadership, experience public politics and policy. And so as long as it's okay with the committee, we would like to see them elect a chairperson, and then that chairperson be able to designate on occasion people to rotate in and out of the seat, if that's okay with the committee.
Can I ask Anna a question before we open it up for other questions? So Anna, sort of the, what we'd like versus the reality of where people are, are you finding in forming this committee, sometimes some committees are very popular, other times you have to like drag people in, what is it, where would you put sort of the student volunteers? Because, you know, the spirit of the law is to have a large group, but the reality is sometimes between all the things, all of the activities, tech, other clubs, it can be hard to get kids to engage, like what is your experience been?
So, so far, when we and my brother, the two people on the committee right now, have been talking to people, there has been a decent number of the people in our grade that we've connected with so far that have been pretty interested, even though they do other things like sports or drama or stage career like I do. But we did have some confusion about what it was we did, so people thought this was student council for a bit. So we had more people originally wanting to, but when we cleared that out, we also got a few additional members that were interested. So we had four, I think, yes, it was four who voted, who were putting themselves up for election yesterday and waiting to hear back for three more, as what we had decided was necessary.
And the goal, if I'm correct, is to get a five-member committee? That's what the state recommends.
So me, my brother, and three more, new members.
Gotcha. That's great, because I think for some of us who have been doing this for a while, often what we've seen is, you know, there are no, no names please, but there'd be a very ambitious individual who would come in, and we could never tell if there was a widespread interest or if their, you know, their interest was kind of making it difficult for others to engage. So having you as part of this committee, just giving us real-life feedback, it's really valuable to us, because we want to engage as much as possible, but also be realistic about, you know, how many, how many kids are actually going to come in for that, so thank you.
We also had some more people interested in doing it, but knew they couldn't fit into their schedules, so I think we'll have a lot more comments on what they would like us to talk about in our meetings, too. So I feel like we'll have more of a wider reach than I don't know if it has been in past years, but I'm positive we'll have a good number of people interested in this this year.
That's cool. Other questions from the committee or concerns? Does anyone feel like this is a reasonable compromise between the requirement and what we can actually field?
I think I, like, I saw the FAQ that came in, because it came in the mail with ours, sort of, so I thought that was kind of a good, it seems like it's indicating that there's a lot of schools that are, a lot of districts that are kind of trying to reframe, make sure they're in line with the law. And I, I kind of like, so one of my questions was, as best practice, so the, the role is to give sort of like a report, or we're calling it share the success, an update, and another role is to be able to be the voice of the students on any matters that are before the committee. So is, would the process be, if they want to speak on something, so if we're planning to speak on something, bring something up, a lot of times we'll go through the chair and we'll say, okay, we're, you know, would they do the same, or are they a completely sort of separate entity? What is...
So I think we need to close that communication gap, which is why I'd like the principal attending once a month and then a school committee member every other month, because then as, as they do their business, and if they get feedback from the student body and say, hey, this is a concern of ours at the high school, for example, or this is an initiative we'd like to take part in, that starts at the ground level, through the organization, with the principal, there's a through line to the school committee, and ultimately, that's how it makes the agenda under Student Advisory Committee. So if you notice what I did tonight, I made a 6A and a 6B. I'll probably follow that format from now on, so that there'd be, A would be whatever, you know, it might be a report from the meetings instead of a share the success, it might be that Anna or whoever's sitting in this chair is giving an update on the past two meetings since our last school committee meeting. Here's the business of the committee, here are some of the initiatives, here's what we're hearing. That's how it gets on an agenda as an update, and if it needs action, then they work with me and the principal to get it onto an official agenda item. But I think that's what I'm hoping will be the end result, so that there's a real good through line between student leadership and school leadership.
Thank you.
Amy, you were, were you...
I'm sorry, I'm so new, I don't know the history, and I'm, I'm not exactly clear on whether there's been a Student Advisory Committee in the past. There has been, oh, so great, so this is carrying forward.
Yeah, so I think what we're trying to do is tighten up, one, empower the Student Advisory Committee to have more legitimate impact as a representative body, because I think that's the charge. Two, to give as many political experiences at the adult level as possible to these young leaders, and then ultimately, three, to make sure our current practices are in line with the expectations of the state and best practices at other high schools.
Are you looking for a member of this committee to volunteer to attend, or is it something that you would hope would rotate?
I think that's up for debate, actually, if we think it would be...
Maybe it's something that the Student Advisory Committee would also like to, maybe it's something the Student Advisory Committee would also like to discuss if they...
Sure.
If they're a member of the school committee, if it's not sort of part of the chart.
It is, it is part of it.
It is, so the school committee member is supposed to go to their meetings, every one, okay. I thought it meant the whole committee, so it's one, right, I thought it meant that they come, make, that they have to come here a minimum of every, okay. So one of us...
I think it would be nice to do it on a rotating basis. That way, we all get a chance and they get a chance to see and talk with each of us. I think it'd be great to do it.
Okay.
That'd be great, yeah.
Does that seem, well, you can ask your committee if they...
I would have to see what the rest of our committee has to say about that, but in my opinion, that sounds nice.
That is already a great political answer. Well done.
Right. If, if we do it every other month, and we each do that once, that's pretty much one school year, which would be nice to, to meet with you.
Or less, right?
Yeah.
And then maybe some thought about, I think, share the success is really positive, but it feels like a preordained conclusion, whereas I think maybe just sort of the titling of this, what really, you know, I don't know what that titling is, maybe you guys could wordsmith it a little, but we're trying to represent that it's really the student government's input, so that if there's something that's concerning you, like it doesn't, we're not always look, we're looking for, we're looking for the perspective of the student, and sometimes that means that you may bring up something that's uncomfortable for us to hear, but we still want to hear it, because we don't want to just hear happy talk unless that's all there is out there. Maybe that's great.
So the way we most recently emailed the principals about was just anything they'd like us to share, so we can, as a committee, work together, like me and this Student Advisory Committee, to work on a new name or something that doesn't, I guess, seem as positive, but then could be positive, or could be just a topic we want to discuss.
School-wide updates or something?
Yeah, something, something that, great. Well, good luck with your organization and...
Do you have updates for us?
I do have just a small list of them. So for updates for the elementary school, they said they didn't have any new updates they wanted us to mention this week. For the middle school, they said that they're having the middle school open house tomorrow, Thursday, September 21st. The middle school also recently elected their representatives to the student council, giving more students in their school a voice and a leadership opportunity. For the high school, the Gloucester Youth Leadership Council came to speak at the weekly assembly about ways students can extend their leadership beyond RHS. The Student Advisory Committee, as I said earlier, held elections to fill the remaining three of the five seats on the committee, and we should be hearing back from them. The guidance department hosted a post-secondary planning night this past week to assist seniors in whatever they decide to do after high school, and fall sports are in full swing as well as the fall musical Xanadu. Thank you.
That should be fun. Thank you, Anna. And as always, you're welcome to stay, if you've got a heavy course load and you need to scram, that's okay, too. You didn't even have to tell me.
I'll say.
Just a standing offer, so you do based on what, you know, your schedule permits. Policy Subcommittee, big moment, progress update.
Well, the Policy Subcommittee met again today, actually. We went over Section D, which was finance and management of funds, I believe it's called. So it was a pretty large section, but that was the section we reviewed as a school committee and approved the updates two years ago. So there weren't, there were some changes, for sure, but we were pretty efficient with going through, and we reviewed that entire section, so we'll have that available for first read, I believe, next school committee meeting. And I think other than that, we just have our first and second reads tonight. Anything else you want to update with?
I think the, the only thing that's important as you go through in, in the hyperlink document that you have in your drive, as you go through the D section that we looked at tonight, you're going to notice there are a couple spots where it was Rockport only, and we had discussions about the historical relevance of those being Rockport only, and MAS C having strong recommendations that we should not necessarily have Rockport-only policies, because we don't have a lot of legal leg to stand on and a lot of best practice behind us in that. So if you have questions about the few in the drive that are labeled that way, I would tell you to go back to the Subcommittee members, and they should be able to give you some more context.
Yeah.
And if I'm correct, we're doing a first reading of Section C and Section F tonight, is that right? Yeah.
That is correct, yep. And then following that is a second read, so on the, on your backup is the chair's request for motions.
So we're making progress, right?
We are.
We've been through A and B, we're going to talk about C and F tonight, and prior to this meeting, we worked on...
D.
D, as well.
It is a lot, for sure, there's no doubt about it, and the plan is to kind of keep this pace going forward so we could make it through the whole policy, although there will be some weeks that we kind of pause and have a chance to just kind of catch up and reflect where we are and, and just kind of see where we're going with it. But I think, you know, it's a good pace, we're being efficient, but we kind of need to do that to make it through the whole policy, the whole, the whole thing, yeah.
I think we've also talked about the fact that there are some portions of the policy manual that are much bigger and more complex, and that will go more slowly, personnel, students, for example. So it's nice to have this success early, in case we slow down later.
And to be fair to the Subcommittee, I had asked for their permission, when we get to those, particularly those sections that Amy just discussed, that I can go back to the leadership team with the track changes and the hyperlinks, and we can look for any operational hazards, so to speak, that might come into play, because oftentimes, when we review policy in isolation and don't apply practice, we jam up the practitioners. So I want to make sure that I run that through the practitioners. So some of these, we haven't had to, many of these, we actually haven't had to, but I suspect that very soon, the leadership team and I will do reviews, particularly out of student services and at the principal's level, and then we'll come back to the Subcommittee after that.
And I just want to reiterate something you said, if you, if you have questions about any of the policies, definitely reach out to either one of us, because we've had some really good discussions about these policies, and there's a lot to some of them, so if you, if you are wondering why something is that way, definitely, I mean, ask here or, you know, as you're previewing, reach out.
Okay. So relative to Sections C and F, it's the first read, so there'll be a chance to do more follow-up, if there's something that we see that we just don't understand or need clarification on. Does anyone have any questions right now for C and F, or relative to the Subcommittee? Anything that surprised you in those sections, or is this mostly cleanup in aisle five in terms of reconciling various ages of documents and the latest policy from the state? Anything that sticks out or surprised you?
I always get caught up between policy versus procedure, right? So what are you guys using as like the five-second or the 10-second guidance for policy versus procedure? Because I look at some of this, I'm like, is that policy, is that, and I'm trying to figure out why things were taken out, so.
My, oh, you go ahead. My first question to myself is what's best practice? What is MASC recommending? That's number one. And number two, we have asked our MASC consultant representative, what is standard practice with other school districts? So those are kind of my first two questions.
I think about the policy that tells us what to do and the procedure that may tell us how to do it. And so, for instance, a policy that says that the superintendent will be evaluated once a year, it, that's the policy, but, but how we do it is the procedure. And procedures might change from time to time, but the policies will not.
We also ran into one tonight, many tonight, but one particularly during finance, when it was very prescriptive, we'll meet with the Board of Selectmen by such and such a date, Finance Committee by such and such a date, and when you put that in policy, I, we don't control that. The town administrator puts out a budget timeline, we do a backwards design, and everything is prescriptively built that way. So all of a sudden, you have a policy that says by such and such a date, you're at the mercy of who the next town administrator is, what the will of the select board is, so specific identifiable placeholders are bad practice. I just pulled up the D that you have access to with the changes, just so you can, just as a reminder for what the committee's been doing with the help of our consultant, Alicia. So you'll see in the, in the red italicized, where she's made notes in the blue, policies contain the same information, worded and arranged differently. If the RPS version is retained, I recommend the language update, that's in italicized red. So then we would review them, we would discuss them, we would debate them, sometimes we'd accept it, sometimes we'd rewrite, and then ultimately, also in that document, what we, what you ultimately vote on in a first and a second read is the clean versions. So you can see what the Subcommittee's work is with the changes, and then if that messes with your head, because there's a lot of colors and underlines in italicized, then you can go to the clean versions and see what you're voting on.
I think...
I think petty cash is a good example of a policy that we suggest striking, because that is procedure. If you just think about how the Finance Department or the bookkeeper handles petty cash, the, the amount of petty cash, for instance, I would think that that might be set from year to year by our school officials, not by us. Thank you.
So C and F, school administration, facilities, development, I mean, just to give a flavor for the changes, I'm seeing some are grammatical edits, some are redundant policies covered in other areas, some are out of date to match. So it doesn't seem like there's anything really shockingly different.
No.
Sure, this will sound familiar to some members of the audience who have helped in the past to clean up these policies. Okay, so if there are no other questions related to the first reading of Sections C and F of our manual, I'm going to seek a motion to accept the clean versions of Policies C and F as a first read.
So moved.
And seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So now we have a second read, so this is the final read, if we approve it, of Sections A and B, with the exceptions of Policies ADC, BEDH, and BHD. So maybe we should take a quick look at what's being held back. Or I guess we should.
ADC, sorry. ADC, Mr. Chair, being held back is tobacco products on school premises prohibited, because we need to make sure there's no redundancies, or that in some cases, there are redundancies between our drug and alcohol and tobacco. And we want a little more time to make sure we're current with all of the other, shall I say, the other tools that can be used for vaping and other things like that. So we're going to take a little, little longer on that particular policy. BEDH, I don't have it in front of me.
Public participation at school board meetings.
Yep. So if I remember correctly, MAS C, and correct me if I'm wrong, Subcommittee members, MAS C is working at the state level to deal with the current political climate in Massachusetts, and what some public meetings have turned into at various levels, and so they're coming out with a best practice recommendation that we are on hold for.
Okay, and then.
BHD.
BHD, I believe, is on hold as we continue with the strategic improvement plan and the development of a communication plan.
Thank you. Yep, that's exactly it. I'm just politely asking to buy a little more time to get that completed.
Sure. We want to get it right.
Yep.
So in looking through the, the A and B sections themselves, a lot of these are really, a lot of these are keeping the trains running, voting method, minutes, those things don't dramatically change from year to year, but.
I think an enormous amount of this is keeping us in compliance with state law.
Yeah. It looks pretty straightforward. Do we have any concerns from the committee about the approval of the second reading of A and B, with the exceptions noted?
Can I have a couple of questions?
Yes, absolutely.
Last time we met, we talked about that in, in, I think it's ACE, ACR, the Director of Student Services is mentioned specifically, which sometimes we try to avoid naming somebody specifically in policy. And there are other things like ACE, and then there's another one, too, where they talk about having a designee, where nobody is designated specifically. So I just want to make sure that that's on purpose and that's acceptable to everybody.
So ACR talks about the Title IX, sexual harassment, and.
They talk about a school designee.
Correct.
But not named, as opposed to.
Well, in ACR, so in ACR, we do name that person?
Martha's named to ACR, but in ACE, it's Title II.
Yep.
Without a listed coordinator.
I believe, and you're in the audience, so you can tell me if I'm wrong, I, I believe the statute requires that we publicly disclose who that Title IX coordinator is by name and by office.
People know who to contact. And on my end, there are designees in each building, potentially, but I have to be the receiver.
So.
It has to be publicly known and posted.
So you are correct that nor. Right.
Right.
You are correct that normally we would try not to name products or people, but in this case, I think it helps us be compliant with the expectations of Title IX.
But we don't need to do that for the Title II coordinator. Okay.
Our MAS C liaison was very specific. She said, there's one place where you must include these names, and we, we came back to that two or three times. And then in the rest of the policy documents, you don't list them, because then you have to keep going back and going back. So it's, it's required in one place, but not in the others.
And I just noticed when I was reading the, tonight, one last time, the BHC talks about the communication of staff with the school committee and school committee with staff, school staff. And it's, it looks as though it's, the school staff should go through the superintendent to speak with us, and we should go through the superintendent to speak with staff. Frequently, staff may come to us to voice a concern directly. So that seemed, reading that policy, a little bit different than what happens. Now, maybe it shouldn't be happening that way, but I'm, and often we will say, direct report is principal, that doesn't work. Superintendent, you know, we lead that.
So, yes, it's not surprising that practice is not always aligned with policy. In any town, forget about just small towns, you all live here and work here and friends here and related to each other, and that's just the unintended consequences. I also think this committee has done a really nice job of putting yourself out there in a professional representative, representative way, where people know who you are and that you are here for them and the kids. So you don't want to lose that feel in a, in a town like Rockport. I think the appropriate answer, to your point, is thank you, I'm one person on the committee, you need to go back to the principal or the curriculum director or the teacher. I think once I have the communication plan, and I believe we've discussed it being a two-way communication plan that includes the school committee in it, that was at our last meeting, I actually think that was a discussion point, right? So once that one-page communication plan is kind of finalized, and then this policy is enacted, then it gives us a little bit of documentation to lean on, so that you don't look like.
Jerk.
Yeah, sure. Your words, not mine, right? Yeah, you don't, yeah, you just don't look like you're being supportive or inclusive.
Pushing off the, right. Okay. Thank you.
And the reverse is also true, where you want to protect the staff from school committee members coming in and.
Yep.
Trying to gather information. Other questions or concerns? All right, so I'm looking for a motion to accept Sections A and B, with the exception of Policies ADC, BEDH, and BHD, which will be finalized by review of the Subcommittee at a later date. And of course, the policies will not take effect until the approval of the full manual at the end of this process.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you. So this is our Strategy for District Improvement update, which I anticipate having one maybe at least once a month at this point, just to give you guys a progress update, and so that as I give you updates on the district goals and my goals, we'll kind of be compliant in that process. And so, a couple changes here to some of the practices that we've been implementing, that I just want to make sure the committee is aware of, and actually, by practice, and I believe by statute, the committee is supposed to.
Adopt.
Approve, thank you, approve the, the election process every year. So if you are a parent, you would have already received this email. If you're not, I'm sharing it with you now, that we are really trying to get a more representative school council model at, at the school level. So especially now that we are developing a brand-new Strategy for District Improvement. And if you remember my presentation a few weeks back, the back pages, which will have the school-specific targets and outputs and outcomes, those take, those pages take the place of the old-school school improvement plan. And so as a result of that, that's what these school councils will be charged with doing. So the statute and best practice requires us that we have parity between representation of school staff members and parents. We're also allowed to have one community member or more, you can actually have more, but here, we're going to probably shoot for one, so that there'll be a balance between parents and staff. The principal counts as staff, which not everybody understood, and no other administrator at the building level can actually be on the school council. So even though we have assistant principals, they can't serve on the school council. On the right-hand side, there are a couple of school committee stipulations here. One, I'm asking for this tonight, that you need to approve the electoral process, which is why I shared the emails that went out, and so you could see what our process is. Two, contrary to what I think some of our practices in Rockport have been, the statute and best practice is that you do not sit on those school councils unless you're a parent and you got elected by the parent base that elected you. So we're used to this liaison model. And if you read this, again, not my language, but this is, it's contrary to the spirit of the law, for a school committee member to be appointed to serve as another person or public member, the intent is to widen the base of citizen involvement and support the school, and you already are involved at the highest level. So that's the state's way of saying, back off. So, so it does not prohibit you from reaching out to the principal and saying, I'd love to attend and be a fly on the wall. And that's, you know, talk to me, talk to the principals, make that happen. But generally speaking, you wouldn't be a participatory member or, at that point. So that's the biggest shift in practice here. And so if you have any questions, I've kind of laid out the emails that went out there. Just so you know what'll happen is, we're on October, my calendar in front of me, 26-ish, I think, the principals and I are going to stand shoulder to shoulder for the first meeting of the year, and we're going to hold a tri-school council meeting with all three school councils in the same location, where I will give a very similar primer to the Strategy for District Improvement that I gave to you and to the public a couple of weeks ago, just so that the newly-elected school councils understand the work that we're going to be asking them to do, to help us craft the school improvement plans that are on the back end of the pages. And then I will step out, and each principal and each school council will then meet a couple of times in October, November, which is pretty aggressive. This will be a hard year, because it's brand-new. After that, it's a little more iterative every cycle. And the hope is that they will fill those back pages out to fidelity, and then before the holiday break in December, I'll be able to come back to you with an updated SDI presentation, showing you what the school councils have developed for the work for this year and for the future years. Then they'll do a mid-year check-in, I think, if, if I'm reading this correctly, February, March, and then they'll do a May-June end-of-year update. So that, we wanted to let people know way ahead of time what the time commitment would be. So they'll do two front-load meetings to craft the plan, they'll do a mid-year update, they'll do a close-of-the-year update, and then we'll probably follow that rotation the following year. We're also trying to put in, it's supposed to be three-year terms, or that's the recommendation. So with new team members, we're trying to elect people to a three-year, a two-year, and a one-year, so we can create a staggered term for our teachers and for our parent base. And so if you, you know, we, I was encouraging principals to say, you know, hopefully you get a fifth-grade parent, for example, or an eighth-grade parent, or a 12th-grade parent to run, give them the one-year seat, and then let the parents of the younger children have the two- and three-year seats, if that makes sense. So any questions, I'd be happy to entertain, and then just a motion to approve the process.
Could I ask, what is the procedure for electing or deciding on a community member? Because in the past, we've had like the same person serving for 15 years, we've had no community members, we've had a wide range of things happening.
It's actually at the principal's discretion.
Okay.
And students do not serve on school councils because they have a student accountability committee?
At the high school level, it's recommended.
Is that correct? It's recommended that students do.
One student representative.
So high school students have multiple opportunities to give input. One is this, the second is the Accountability Committee, and theoretically, the third might be Student Council.
Correct.
Thank you.
And again, Anna's organization might agree or disagree, so I'll let you debate that. My professional recommendation would be that you seek someone who's not on the SAC first, just again, to spread out the opportunities. If nobody steps forward and everybody steps backwards, then welcome to public volunteerism.
It, it's been challenging in the past, in some years, to get parents to step up, which often has resulted in someone serving for 15 years, so.
I do believe the elementary school has, don't quote me, but I believe the elementary school is all set. I want to say, middle school is all set, and I think the high school's close. So yeah, I, you know, I think if we, if you frame it this way, and you let people know ahead of time, here's the work and here's the commitment, they're way more apt to volunteer.
Wired and engaged.
Yeah.
Nice. Any other questions or concerns? Otherwise, I will ask for a motion to approve the school council member election process as presented.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Very nice. So that would move us into new business, the grant programs update.
So we have Director of Student, I'm off, Director of Student Services, Martha Robinson, with us tonight. I will let her kind of take the show over, but just a quick primer here that we're following a new process. Martha's going to talk to us about a new system and some new requirements, which is why she's here, because one of the requirements is to do a public disclosure, and this is our public disclosure. Duly noted.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. A little bit of feedback. I just requested a few minutes from Dr. Branco to be able to come here and make sure that we're compliant with the new regulations around the grant system. June, San Felipe works closely with me on this and the new system. Am I really getting a lot of feedback here? Okay. So you have the slides. Thank you. You have the slides that I prepared. Previous to this current FY '24, the state used a system called EdGrants. That system is now being phased out. And a new system, GEMS, is being introduced for the FY '24 grant cycle, which we are actively in the weeds in. We, June and I submitted one significant grant about eight days ago, and we have another one coming up on October 2nd, and I can share a little bit more information as we get into those. The previous system, the EdGrant system, because all federal entitlement grants have a 27-month tidings, the last of the FY '23 grants, we potentially will be still working in the EdGrant system until September of '24. So there's that, that carryover. June and I are working really hard to, as we're spending money out in the way the grants are allocated, to exhaust those funds from the previous grants that are carried over from previous years, so that we can get out of having to run our funds out of two systems at the same time. So there are two primary grants that are going to be maintained in the GEMS system moving forward. The consolidated ESSA grants, which is Every Student Succeeds, which is the most recent reiteration of the No Child Left Behind, kind of conglomerate of grants. For us, that includes Title 1A, Title 2A, Title 4A. The Rockport Public Schools does not qualify for Title 3A. That is specifically geared for students, English, non-speaking students, and our population does not meet the levels with which to, to receive those funds, and we do not qualify at this time for any of the Perkins grants that are out there. So the other consolidated grants are the IDEA grants, the Individual with Disability Education Act grants. So we have the most major grant that we receive through the DESI system, which is the IDEA, the 240 grant. And then we also receive the IDEA ECSE, which is the Early Childhood Special Education, and that's a much smaller grant, based on our size and populations and our end-of-the-year numbers from the previous fiscal. And those monies can only be used for special education at the pre-K level. Okay? So I'm here tonight really because the GEMS system, it has a lot more parts to it. It's not that much more complicated, but it does require public notice. In the opening days of school, I addressed teachers and paraprofessionals who may have had some salaries attached to the grants in the previous years, and how we're shifting that to be more fiscally-minded about moving and, and having funds more available for use directly for student use. So I've kind of hit that, student support staff and teachers. The administrative team certainly talks about the grants on an ongoing basis every summer as they're released. So I'm here today to just make sure we check the box, to make sure that school committee has some input, feedback, and can ask questions about the process. So again, every year, the two, is the '24 fiscal year allocation is based on our end-of-the-year data from our June 1, our June 1 SIMS, and the funds are used in accordance with the USC, USDOE guidelines. Historically, monies for the ESSA grants, and that includes Title 1, which is literacy, and only our elementary school qualifies for use of the Title 1 funds this year. It also qualifies, or includes Title 2A, which is Professional Development Focus. And we've really worked this summer to align spending and the way we're going to allocate the monies in the 2A to align with our professional development. to align with our professional development plan, which again, really uh also takes into account the Strategic District Improvement Plan. Uh, and it also includes Title IV, which is also focuses on uh professional development. So everything in the writing of the ESSA grant that was just submitted a few days ago really looks at the professional development and the Title I. Some of the things that's been used for before is focused professional development in line with the district professional development plan. Uh, Title I literacy, uh, a teacher's salary in part. Uh, Title I literacy instructional materials and techno- technology needs, universal screening protocols at the elementary school, and uh a reserve for homeless and foster care transportation. It does fall under the Title I, and every year we have, um, we carry amount, you know, forward to assure that we have at least some funds to start if there are families um who have children in foster care or are having some housing stability issues that we can get them to school in accordance with what's determined best for them. Uh, this year, we are looking to kind of tweak the way we're spending um some of the money under the ESR, and that's again, continued focused uh with PD, the SDI will really be important in in driving the way we focus on that this year. We are expanding at the elementary school. And Amy Waterman, uh, the principal, is the Title I coordinator, so we wrote this this aspect of the grant very closely. Uh, and with Dr. Branco's blessing last spring, we planned on expanding our Title I offerings to be, uh, to include math this year. So uh, the Title I, um, two teachers, one in math and one in literacy, funds their salaries in part. Title I instructional materials and technology will be focused on the math programming needs this year. We've really have um, really very short, very much shored up the um instructional material and technology for the literacy. So we're really focusing our funds on math this year. And again, we'll have reserved some funds for homeless and um foster care transportation. Any questions before I go on to the special ed grants? So uh, so the FY twenty-eight allocation again is based on our end-of-the-year data, has to be used um in accordance with um DOE um guidelines, and they must only be used for special education um services. There is a way that we can um shift the way we write the grant so that a certain amount of those funds can be used for general education. But just given the state of our students' needs, um, and just overall budgeting and working with Dr. Branco and June over the last year, we continue to feel that um all the funds that are um offered to us through the federal government for special education remain focused on those students' needs. So historically, the monies have funded um in part the salaries of six teachers and three uh paraprofessionals. Contracted services, which might be things like a teacher of the visually impaired, um, a BCBA where we didn't have someone on staff previously, instructional materials and assessment kits for uh our special educators, our OT, PT, school psychologists, to make sure they have all the proper assessment tools. Focus PD um and memberships. Uh, and memberships might be like a book share, uh, which is for all students who are on IEPs or five oh fours, can have free recorded books uh available to them. And then again, we have a reserve for specialized transportation. If we had a student who um had a mobility issue and they needed to have a a special van or accessible van made available for them to attend a field trip or a prom, uh, both state and federal law say that we can't pass on the cost of that vehicle to all the other students uh who are accessing that activity. So that comes to my office, and we make sure that all students who need to have access have that access. Um, how I'm looking to spend the money this year um on behalf of um our students uh is that we are going to take the teachers and the paraprofessionals who were in part paid through that, out of that. There will be an equal balance, um, and I can explain as we get forward of how I'm going to put some funds in and take some funds from somewhere else. And it really is a financial gain um that benefits the students. So in s- in part, the central office administrative assistant, the salary of that person will in part be paid through this. Where she's a central office um administrative assistant, the part where she really focuses on special education, that is where we will use to support the funding of that position. Contracted services will now include um out-of-district transportation, and this is where that shift of the teacher-paraprofessional salaries in part, anytime, whether it's the Title I um or these grants, that we have teacher or paraprofessional salaries attached, there is that MTRS, the retirement, um, or the Essex County, a nine percent pull. The disadvantage of having salaries, and when I got here, by the way, I think there were nine teachers and eleven paraprofessionals who were, it was an enormous amount of people whose salaries were included, and I've tried to back that off because what happens is there's a nine percent pull on those salaries that has to go into those retirement systems. But it's the, and the nine percent still has to be pulled from the side where the town is paying. So instead of getting nine percent on uh an individual person's salary, the MTRS or the county gets thirteen percent, or because they're getting, or thirteen and a half, because they're getting the nine percent and another nine percent on a portion of someone's. So it's like a double dipping, so we're, we're paying out money that we don't have to. So by doing this switch, that's just this year, um, it it recoups a significant amount of money for us to be able to again um shift towards um student needs. I will take the same amount that was used last year, and I will use that for transportation, which has no additional kind of penalty against it. So we're just, we're, the money's always been there. I'm just trying to use in more efficient ways, if that makes sense. Again, instructional materials and assessment kits. Publishers update testing protocols all the time, and they are very expensive. So we always make sure that we have reserve funds to do that. Again, focused professional development and memberships, um, and a reserve for specialized transportation for any students who may come to need such. So any questions about funding?
Are you finding, Martha, that relative to, so at at the end of COVID, there's been a reassessment about, you know, the impact on the kids' social, emotional, and academic lives? Are you finding that the funding levels for some of these grants, are they recognizing that, or is it pretty much the same from year to year?
So uh during FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, there were some uh, some, two grants that came back that had been phased out and had become much more um selective and that, with the, who the government was offering them to, the two seventy-four specifically. And we got that in like, wow, it was forty-three thousand, and it paid for a significant amount of um mental health needs and different things that we needed in the, within the department. There were ARP, uh, the ARP grants that came out, American Recovery, planning uh grants, so we had two of those that came through. Those have now, we've made sure that we spent out those because they had a shorter tidings, actually. So we had to really focus because they were intended to address the needs of COVID in the most timely manner and like returning to school. Uh, so those have been spent out. There is no sense that there's going to be additional grants. My money continually kind of goes up a little bit in the special education uh realms. That's just the trend for across the country, across state. Uh, the Title I, Title II, the ESSA funds are going down, and that has more to do with enrollment in general uh than anything else.
Can I make a comment if you are answered a question for maybe the rest of the committee to? Oops, I'm sorry. Thank you for explaining that so well. I had a couple of questions, and you addressed them.
Okay.
Um, and your, um, in what you were saying, one question I had about the out-of-district transportation. And now is that something, when we have um our state senator or representative here, is that one of the things that's been discussed that
It has.
the state might fund, but they never really say at what level? And so what shook out with that?
Yep, so we're now at the point, over the past four years, there has been a rollout where in the annual circuit breaker, which comes due the first week of July, uh, the, and usually it's, it's set at about a thirty-seven to thirty-eight percent, kind of like kickback, for lack of better terms, on uh tuitions that were over the foundation. Foundation uh this year has gone up to close to fifty-two thousand. Uh, it was just at forty-nine thousand last year, basically. So if we have a student who has tuition uh out of district or in in district who um using the algorithms that the state gives us, that the cost of their education costs above foundation, we can claim it, and you get a certain percentage back, usually in the thirty-seven to thirty-eight percent range is what's been historically. Uh, about, I want to say it was now four years ago, they started, there was a twenty-five percent uh rollout for the first year where we could add in transportation. Transportation used to be, in no way did we get any money back for that. About four years ago, it was twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent. We're not quite sure where it's going to go this year. We don't know if it will be up to a hundred percent. I really doubt that. I would think that it will, we'll be able to claim up to seventy-five percent of that cost, but then again, it will only be up to thirty-seven percent of what's over that foundation, which now they call threshold. So that, we are getting more back, for sure. But the cost of busing has also gone up.
And and that, that twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five percent, that's above the threshold of a certain number. So it's not that we're getting
Correct.
fifty percent of the total cost of transformation, which is
Correct.
can be as much as the actual services, right?
Right. And I, and I will say, and I know I'm here to talk about one thing I don't want to get in, um, but it's so easy. You know, last year, I think you're all aware that the state passed very suddenly without us really having a whole lot of warning um in terms of budgeting, a fourteen percent increase. And of the eleven schools that we have students that are private place out of district or had at that time, every single one of those organizations took the opportunity to up their tuition by fourteen percent. Even the one that upped it by nine percent with a special charter two years before. So usually you see anywhere from an eleven-hundred to thirteen-hundred increase in foundation. It went up almost four thousand dollars from, you know, I was, I want to say it was forty-seven-five, forty, forty-seven-three, and now we're just over fifty-two. So the foundation has gone up, and the state said, the fourteen percent, you're going to get it back through circuit breaker, and it really is, it it's not as user-friendly to us um as districts as they made it sound. So we're really going to need to look at our our funding carefully and just be mindful of that those gaps that they said would not be so challenging are going to be challenging, in fact. If that makes sense. So that's that, does that answer your question about the transportation?
Thank you.
We are, we are able to recoup those funds at this point. Any other questions?
So I, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I just want to point out again for our own edification and for the public, um, that in a larger school district, we have full-time grant managers. Um, we have teams of people. Some districts hire uh grant managers that then um command a salary based on how much money comes in on private grants, for example. You know, I've spoken a lot about us being lean and mean and the administrative team wearing two, three, four, five hats each. And so um if it wasn't for Martha and June tag-teaming on this work, and if it wasn't for them really thoughtful school-level administrators doing the backend, which is creating the justifications, identifying the need, doing some of the ed narrative.
Providing all the data.
Providing the data. We would not be poised to take advantage of these opportunities the way we are. And if you remember during the budget cycle, the the beauty of putting out the budget book and making it transparent is to let people know in the community that we were trying to maximize every dollar that's there at the, at the state and federal level, um, so that we're not asking for a larger amount of money from the taxpayer appropriation. So I I can't say it loud enough that, you know, we have a team of people um who have two or three or four other jobs each in this district who are doing this work, the work of, in a big place, that would be one or two or a three-team member. So I thank both of you who are sitting here tonight um for all of that, and I thank the principals and the leadership teams at the building level. This was, to, in my opinion, super clear. This is a place that if I, if the superintendent doesn't have to stress over this, and he, he or they can just be at the top of the work guiding the vision, um, because there's a lot of trust and a lot of skill set, then that's a healthy organization. And I feel like that's where we are. Um, I I'm confident that we're doing everything we can, and you heard about it tonight, to maximize our dollars and to make different decisions. So it's not about, that's the way we've always done it. We're not just falling into patterns of behaviors. So thank you for that work, and thank you to the people who are not here as well.
I have only one question, and I don't know whether it's maybe a question for June. If the district had more resources, more people, more grant writers, is there money that we're leaving on the table out there because we don't have the resources as a district to go after them?
I would say the state used to, I mean, I'm going back in time because I've been here a while. Back in the day, there would be maybe twenty-five grants in our, in our heyday. And it would just be the same federal grants that Martha just explained. So all the rest were state grants. There are none. If there are, they're for very specific targeted uh opportunities that usually, you could probably agree or disagree with me, that more would target larger districts or financially um struggling or in need districts or certain demographics that just wouldn't be uh a match for Rockport. And we just don't qualify for those, what few opportunities there are. So yeah, the money has gone away in in that regard.
Yeah, every Friday, I have a habit of kind of like taking a gander at things before I leave for the the weekend, and one of them is to go to the finance and um grants page and to look and see if there are any competitive grants. I will say that we have, for lack of better terms, a hound dog in Jody Goodhue at the elementary school, and she digs up, um, you know, she finds the competitive grants out there, uh certainly around math and literacy, as we look to augment um new programming at the elementary school, um, as the ESR funds have been exhausted or are going to be exhausted soon. She's really good, and she'll come to me, uh, because I have to approve a grant. Sometimes there are competitive grants outside of DOE or ODSI, and I need to do research to see, is that, um, is that led by someone who has a certain uh political affiliation? So I need to be able to, you know, consult with, you know, Dr. Branco on those things and then give the go-ahead. I think we only had one of those last year, it was a small grant. Oftentimes, the Gloucester Public Schools or different agencies in Gloucester will extend opportunities for us for a competitive grant, and that's always a partnership that we take advantage of because it benefits uh kids going on different kinds of field trips uh with uh, you know, resources that we wouldn't have been able to access ourselves. But there are a few competitive grants coming up that we'll be looking at. They're small, uh, one to support the initiative for the new IEP process coming out that we are piloting, um, or getting into the pilot for uh this year. So I'll be going after that competitive grant. And again, it might be X for a city like Springfield and a very tiny, a lowercase X, for Rockport. So we'll see, but we, we do uh, we do go after everything that we can.
Thank you.
And June and I are very good about making sure that we don't give any money back.
So I, I guess, I'm wondering if Amy's question got answered in the sense, are there grants that we just can't go after?
Yes.
Because either we, okay.
Yep, so they're entitled, these are entitlement grants, and they are based on our end-of-the-year information that goes from DESI to the U.S. Department of Ed. They have their formulas, they send us back, you know, funds. And as long as we fill out the paperwork correctly and we submit them on time, we get the funds. They're entitlements. Then there are competitive grants, and the federal government and the state government, not many by the state now, but they do do competitive funds, uh, competitive grants. And those you do have to kind of jump through a few more hoops. There's more narrative, there's more data, there's more follow-up. Um, and sometimes they come in two parts, and you won't necessarily get the second part if you don't show um the commitment and the accountability that is required for the first half.
The only place, um, because you used the language like leaving money on the table, the only place where larger districts have success with some kind of contracted grant manager is to go for the independent, private-funded grants, right? And one, it is a capacity issue here, and two, as Martha said, there's a lot of vetting, who's behind the money, what the, what the affiliations are. So that's the, that's the benefit of having that kind of a position. And the, in a, in a small community like this, the only way you make that work is the person's entire salary is dependent on them chasing money. It's a commission position. And I have no opinion at this time because we haven't got to the point where we really entertain that. But it's a model that has worked in other places and has failed in other places. It's really just dependent, dependent upon the person.
I think I heard you say we don't qualify for Perkins.
Correct.
And it, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, that's connected to career prep, vocational programming?
Parts of it are, yep. A lot of vocational schools or schools that have vocational programs embedded in their high school, shops, carpentry, electrical, whatever it may be, um, they tend to be uh the public schools that benefit from those more closely. There, I want to say, most of you are familiar with the ECLC grant that we got through the Tower Foundation back, Amy, Rose, and I wrote that in February of eighteen, and that's the only really significant, that was fifty thousand dollars over two, two cycles, that we've uh pursued, uh, because we were able, it's the Tower Foundation. We know it was a very reputable, um, where, and we continue to be connected with them. I'm on the advisory committee for ECLC now, so.
That's great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, that's a lot of, a lot of information, a lot of detail.
That was easy. I was, I was prepared for questions.
Thank you.
All right, take care, have a good night.
So scheduling update.
So as you know, um, we're in the throes of working out our plans to transition from a middle school and a high school model in one building to a one-school model, six to twelve, uh, for the school. from a middle school and a high school model in one building to a one-school model, six to twelve, uh, for the school year coming up in twenty-four, twenty-five. And so, um, Principal Rodman and Principal Rose and I started to co- have conversations about what that work needs to entail. One of the biggest and most daunting components of that work is actually to develop a, a, um, all-school master schedule that will meet the needs of middle school methodology and young adolescents and at the same time, meet the needs of our young adults, um, and getting them prepared for college and career. Um, so with that said, we wanted to put together a representative schedule development team um, of faculty members and administrators from both the middle level and the high school level. And so this is a, a copy of the email that was sent out last week, um, just so that you could see that the process was started and to see that we were looking for specific representation. Uh, three content, uh, or core teachers, one from each grade at the middle school, three in total at the high school level. Because they're not grade-specific, we're going to let them decide how they, uh, how they elect those individuals. Um, a special educator from each, uh, school level and two special subject or non-core teachers that we are selecting. So for example, that could be fine arts, world language, uh, STEM, something like that. So, um, I met with our two union co-presidents, um, and asked them so that there was no bias or, uh, lack of understanding of how people were selected, if the union, um, would take control of that process. Uh, so the RTA, um, has put together, uh, a process at each school. Joanne Hildreth is managing that for us at the middle level. Aiden McCarthy is managing it for us at the high school level. And they have a process in place to identify who the teacher representatives on this committee will be. And and, um, they will be informing Aiden and Joanne of their interest by this Thursday, actually by tomorrow. And, um, at that point, we'll come together and and develop the final committee. And, um, I anticipate having some kind of, um, major first meeting, uh, before the end of October. Um, so, you know, if you talk to your high school principal, she still wants the whole schedule done and ready to go. Uh, she's always been aggressive with her scheduling timelines. And I've explained to Ms. Rose that this is unfortunately not the year to be aggressive with our scheduling timelines. Um, so we will take a breath, we'll put the right people in the room. Um, and I'm, uh, I'm, you know, assuring, uh, both middle school and high school level educators that this can be done. As a matter of fact, Mr. Rodman, with his connections as the, he, he is still the executive director of NELMS. Um, so he has more energy than I do on a good day. Uh, so he's still out there and through his connections, um, he's identifying, um, some high-functioning six-to-twelve schools within the New England area that we can take a site visit to, hopefully two or three of them, and take a look at how they're, uh, functioning administratively, from a schedule standpoint, uh, interactions with the student body, programming, cross-curricular work, that kind of thing. So, um, we, we intend to go on multiple walkabouts, um, during this school year to really see if we can steal some great best practices and get a feel for how to do this well. Um, and, um, I happen to live next door to a principal who just recently retired from a, um, six-to-twelve school in Massachusetts that was a pretty high-performing school. So I think we have some, we can leverage some good professional relationships, um, to get this work done. And, um, you know, every month or so, I would suspect, I'll come back to you with some kind of progress update on the, on the transformation of the school. But we're starting with scheduling.
Do you, Mark, can I ask you, do you ever, in these exercises, because we've, we've seen them over the years where it's, you know, it's a very difficult puzzle to get all the pieces in. Do you ever in those discussions create a composite or use an avatar of different types of students floating through the system? The reason I'm asking that is, I know historically, I've heard from students who maybe have, um, great interest in music, but that shuts them out of getting into any art class because if you take the music, they're only allocated at the same time. And it just strikes me that having sort of a composite avatar of, okay, here's the, the student, lack of a better word, the creative student who's musical, artistic, like versus maybe a student who's more STEM or maybe there's a model in between where they have equal interests in both. Just seems like an interesting exercise to go through.
Yeah, so the answer is yes.
Good, okay.
There, so, um, if you don't remember this, and some people weren't here at the time, that Jeff, the, the relationship that I had previously with Jeff Rodman was that I was on, um, the board of directors for the New England League of Middle Schools for many years before he took over this as the executive director. So he and I both have worked as consultants for that organization, um, in different capacities as middle school schedulers. So he and I have a lot of experience, um, working as hired guns, so to speak, to go out into school districts in New England to kind of work with them. So the two of us have a good, um, foundational process for getting this work done. So I'm, I'm less concerned about that. What, um, I anticipate happening here, which is not going to be unique to Rockport, is where we fall in love with things that we just continue to do. And I don't mean programming, I don't mean like we fall in love with the band. But we fall in love with how students cycle through or how we deploy human resources. Um, what time of day do certain things happen? What time of day do all of our students have, um, just the fine arts classes? Do all of our high-end history classes hit at the same time concurrently with something else? Um, the only real way to address those in my professional experience is to literally wipe the whiteboard clean. Most people just stick their finger in the hole over and over and over again to try to stop the break in the dam. Um, and that's how organizations and schools often try to fix scheduling. We have a really good opportunity to wipe the whiteboard clean. Um, and one of the first things we always say when we go in and do this work in other districts is a good educator and a good scheduler can look at your school schedule and identify what you really value simply by how your schedule works. And so we're going to have a values conversation right out of the gate. What do we value? What are our non-negotiables for kids? Um, and the other thing that I'll say a hundred times that you'll hear me say here first is a schedule needs to meet the needs of these people in this order, students, then educators, then administrators. And, um, that sounds really simple, but you'd be shocked at the conversation around that order of events. Um, so it, it's, I like the work, it's a strange thing to like. Um, I like the work and I like the problem-solving aspect. And I'm really excited about the possibility to rethink how we cycle students through these opportunities. I will tell you, as a parent of an art kid, right, I have a child who's a, uh, who's at Mass Art, studying art now, who also was a, 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 a junior district-level trumpet player at one point and really in my hometown wanted to stay in band and art because that's how they identified. Um, and the only reason I could make it happen is because I'm an in-the-know education parent. And so I've said I don't want to have to rely on in-the-know education parents to be able to advocate, um, for that. So we need to set systems up that are better. And sometimes kids eventually do make choices, but I would prefer they're later in their high school career. Like by the time you get to your level, um, theoretically, you've had time to kind of identify a lean. I might major in this, here are things that the world has told me I'm good at or I like and things that I'm not good at or don't like. Right, I love basketball, but I knew I wasn't playing at the college level. Um, you know, so my like for basketball is different than my participation in it. Um, so I want to make sure students, as they progress through our six-to-twelve system, um, that I don't want the schedule to be prohibitive in them getting experiences that are broad-based and at the same time, for being able to really micro-focus on, on their, their areas of, of need and interest. So this is where we are. We've, we're going to have some good people on there. Um, I've already heard, um, the interest level is pretty peaked at this point in time for this work, so.
Okay, so, and you're the, um, the date of delivery of this new schedule system, a year from now, are you thinking, or?
Well, no, because the, the principal, no, the principal needs it running for September, right?
Okay.
So that's, yeah, this work happens this year and we're a six-to-twelve school in September.
Excellent.
August twenty-eighth, whatever that day is. And remember, we've already asked, need asked for an extension.
Right.
Predicated upon this.
And approved for one.
And approved for one. And our athletic director will then go to the MIAA because right now we ask for waivers as a small town for, uh, middle school students to play up. Um, when you identify as a six-to-twelve school, you need, you do not need to apply for waiver systems anymore. So there are some, um, interesting perks along the way, too.
Right. Okay, thank you, that looks exciting.
Yeah, I think it's super exciting. I think it, of all the work you've been doing since you started, this to me is the thing I'm looking forward to seeing the most. I can't wait. It's really, really exciting. And I love how you described the process, too, so, thank you.
I also think it's exciting. I think it's a great opportunity for students. I wonder how the part of our community that doesn't have students in our schools will learn about this great work. I'm very mindful that not everybody in the community really understands what's happening in schools. And this effort is all about making great uses of our resources. And many people care about that quite a lot. So I don't need to hear about it now, but I, I will be eager to hear what the plan is to communicate this kind of work out. I probably sound like a broken record.
No, you and I continue to have the same conversation, right, around, um, again, big districts that have PR coordinators or communication directors, and that is not who we are as a, in scope. Um, so the leadership team and I will have to have conversations about who's reaching out to the Gloucester Times, who's putting it out to the community, um, and how are we letting people know that we're going through this transformation? That some people in the community will say, ah, been there, done that. Twenty years ago, it was a six-to-twelve school, you're just doing what we used to do. Well, no, it was a six-to-twelve school with junior high model embedded in it, not middle school philosophies. That's totally different. I didn't grow up in a middle school. I grew up in the junior high era. Um, so there are a lot of people that don't know the difference. And so some of it might be generally educating non-education community members to that work, too.
Right, and and I think for people to understand, this is a good thing that expands opportunities for students, creates a more efficient schedule, a more efficient use of human resources. Probably will have, um, all kinds of positive ripple effects. It's not simply a response to declining enrollment.
No, 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 as a matter of fact, it's going to allow us to maximize staff. And, and right now, we have two completely separate schedules in the same building. So if you're an art teacher or a music teacher and you teach at both levels, because those schedules are not concurrent and don't have blocks that are similar, whoever schedules you first wins.
And I think that message will resonate with people who are, are, again, not in schools, but very curious and interested in how efficient we are and how we continue to offer high-quality programs for a lot of students.
Thank you.
Tamagawa University, is that?
So, um, Amy Waterman, Principal Waterman, reached out to me, um, asking, uh, for our blessing, uh, to have some visitors come in. I think this is a fantastic opportunity. Again, we talk about partnerships and, uh, the, you know, the world is flat and, um, getting some international, uh, partnerships going. So, uh, coming up very soon, right? Um, we're, right, we're hosting, uh, six visitors from, uh, Tamagawa University. Um, and I won't read this whole thing to you, but they have, um, included visits to Landmark and Beverly and Manchester Essex and other communities in the past. And, um, really, really excited to learn from them and to have them learn from us. And, um, just another example of what happens when you have people in the district who have experiences outside of the desk district, right? Because we have a principal and assistant principal who have connections, uh, to Landmark and from working in other places, um, they've been able to build some capacity and some relationships, so, um, a good, great opportunity.
Do we know, in terms of what visitors are describing, are these graduate students? Are these administrators from the university or who's coming?
I actually will not know until tomorrow. Um, so I, um, I believe Amy is in contact with them. And I, to my understanding, it's ed- it's in, in the trench educators, so it could be administrators and teachers.
So they'd like to observe what goes on?
Yep, and discuss, uh, with teachers and with administrators, practices, ex, uh, policies, um, resources. And I think a lot of just, let's see what, see how things are done. I, and I will probably ask Amy to either give me an update back or just to come to you, um, just to kind of share out our experiences. I think it's a cool opportunity.
It would be cool to have them talk to some students about what it's like to be a student in Tokyo, how different it might or might not be, but probably outside the scope.
I don't know, they, they, tell you tomorrow. Um, so, um, our town administrator has put out the timeline already for capital improvement planning. Um, let's just say, super-aggressive timeline. Uh, as we barely are closing out FY twenty-three, uh, we are already thinking about, uh, capital improvement planning. So, right, so, um, just so that you know, we'll go through a similar process that we went through last year. Here's the timeline, September twenty-ninth is coming up super fast. Uh, June and Kirk and I have a meeting Friday morning, correct? Maybe-ish?
Yes.
Yes. I've checked my calendar, but Friday morning, we are meeting. Um, if you remember last year, we did a two-year. Um, and, um, June can speak, uh, more correctly on what we got and didn't get or what we got and what's put off into year two. So, um, I'll stop in a minute and let you, um, give that explanation. But we did a two-year. Um, some of the stuff was already fully purchased, other stuff is put together in a two-year plan. And so what we need to sit down with, first with Kirk and then with principals after that, is to figure out, um, what other, um, capital asks we're going to put into what is now called year one, which was last year's year two.
So our year two, um, as you might remember, is this year they did some flooring in the elementary school. That was broken down into a two-year plan. So half of the, uh, rooms that were needed to go from the carpet tile model to a solid surface, um, model, half of those were done. And then the blinds, we're replacing all the blinds in the school for many reasons, age, security, uh, whatnot. Uh, that was also broken down into half. So this year, the target is to do the middle school, high school. Um, and then we propose to, year two now becomes year one, to then tackle the elementary and finish it off. Why Kirk needs to go out is because, as you can tell, this is for fiscal twenty-five. We're just starting fiscal twenty-four. So a year ago, two years ago, was when these prices for this year's project were put together. So we can't use the same pricing again. It's just not real. Nothing costs the same four years later. So Kirk, unfortunately for him, has a lot of work to do this week. Um, we'll be asking a lot of him to go reach out to all his vendors to get, uh, proposals. It doesn't mean that we actually go with those vendors, they're just, um, they're usually vendors that would like the opportunity to bid on those or they're off the state bid list, um, that we can take advantage of that as well. So those are the two that are mainly, and then we're going to go for some new projects. And that would be year one, and we'll decide in our meeting whether that is a one-year or a two-year plan. Um, but sometimes we might even put it on the second year only. And it's more informative to say, this isn't priority one this year, but you should know this is coming. So the town's aware and can plan appropriately that DPW may have a large project, but so may we. They may need it this year, but ours will be the next year, and they can plan for that. So we always try to give a heads up if we can, if there's something big coming down that is maybe two or three years out, the town likes to see that. And it becomes an informative piece as well.
You might remember that the other components of the year one ask were the truck, the tractor, and one mini bus.
A used.
Used, a used mini bus.
Generally used.
So those were all part of the year one ask, which we haven't, the money's there, we just haven't executed those purchases because that's taking time.
And the pre-K playground.
And the pre- pre- pre-K playground, which was pushed to, um, CPC.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And approved.
And approved, thank you, CPC. Um, so, um, so we'll sit together, then with the, after June and Kirk and I meet, we'll go to the principals, June and I, um, to see if there's any other building needs other than the blinds and the flooring, um, and then come back to you, uh, at the next meeting with the final list to run through.
How much earlier is this request than the prior years? Couple weeks, a month?
No, this, uh, this was the same timeline last year. Um, I, comparative to other districts, I, I can't speak of that. You, Mark, would be the, I feel it's very early, but.
We also have like the second earliest town meeting in the entire Commonwealth.
Yeah, so everything gets pushed back accordingly.
Everything is pushed, it just is how the town does business.
It's, it's interesting because right now I'm actually living in three years.
Right.
I'm, I'm waiting to report on last year. We are living in this year and now we are already planning for next year. So it, it's interesting to plan ahead so early when you don't have a grasp on this year, but it, it works for Rockport in the past and we, we go ahead.
There is a strange sense of accomplishment to doing it early.
Yeah.
Right, because I, I, you, you're not, you're less reactionary. Um, and then ultimately, we can move on with the business of operating this year. So I, I, it's new and it's different, so those of us have been in other places. But honestly, um, it's not really, we're not really changing the time, time of town meeting either, so it is what it is.
You're not panicking in June, waiting for a budget.
Right, right.
Staff, I think it gives staff a sense of security.
Yes.
I think that's the most benefit of it.
It allowed us to post early last year. It allowed, if you remember correctly, when I gave you all updates in August about staffing, some of my peers were sitting there with five, ten, fifteen, eighteen open positions in school districts. Um, and we were not in that situation. So as a result of, I, I believe that's as a result of early and thoughtful budgeting.
Yeah, yes, I think that's one of the most beneficial aspects of it.
So we'll, uh, we'll come back with a final
Okay.
List for you in a couple weeks.
Exciting.
Far out are you, I mean, you, you kind of addressed it a little bit, but I guess how far are you looking in advance? Not, not to the detail of, you know, one, two years, but more of a long-term plan about how, you know, some of the improvements need to happen and?
It's funny you ask that, so some.
Five-year plan, a ten-year plan?
So some, so some districts, I'll be careful with my phraseology, spend a lot of time, no judgment in that statement, spend a lot of time on five-year capital improvement planning and development, similar to strategic planning. and development, similar to strategic planning. And it is always impacted a year later by finances, or a year later by change in need, or a year later by a state statute, or a year later by the fact, here's what I just learned about where we are now. The bottom of our vehicles rust faster than they do where I live. I didn't know that. Seawater, I should know that, but scientifically, seawater and everything else up here destroys our vehicles faster. So, a vehicle that should last, you know, 150,000 miles, the body falls apart in Rockport faster for municipal vehicles, and you're replacing them at 70,000 miles, not because of wear and tear from driving them, just because of where we live and work. So, just like I'm trying to do with our strategic plan, is put one in place that is now iterative. I think the two-year capital improvement model is working. That does not mean we don't have those conversations. We clearly have, like, a wish list and a dream, "Wow, how cool would it be to do this next, and this next, and this next." We're just not going to document it in a way that either feels like fantasy or holds us accountable for something we can't do. Yeah. And there's, you know, everything from green initiatives to environmental savings and expectations that could impact particularly what we purchase around HVAC systems or vehicles in the future, rebates or not rebates. So, we're having some interesting conversations, particularly around vehicles right now.
M-CAS preliminary.
So, I'm going to say this, and please help me honor this. This is 10,000-foot view tonight. Jody Good, you and I will be back here in two weeks with the deep dive of the actual achievement and growth, and the bar graphs, and the comps from class-to-class, grade-to-grade stuff. So, tonight is simply because the public release happened yesterday, and already, if you've looked at the front page of the Boston Globe, they've put out their doomsday narrative. And so, I'm not here to give you a narrative in that respect at this point. I just want to give you the facts. So, I've given you the release schedule. Everything went public yesterday. The embargo was lifted. Parent and guardian reports, we have them right now. So, again, because Jody has that new leadership position as Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment, Jody and I will partner shoulder to shoulder, and we're going to take the deep dive. We're going to do the data analysis. We're going to do the reports, and then we, if you didn't know, this is what we did last year. We then share them out at the faculty level, so principals and curriculum teams then have access to all the same reports, sort of in a systemic way, so that it's not teacher X pulling this report and teacher Y pulling different reports. So, we're going to be real systemic about that, and then we're going to do by department M-CAS analysis with outcome-driven work, which is what we did last year, and I'd like to say had some positive impact on our results. So, that is all going to take place, and Jody and I will give you a pretty deep dive in a couple weeks. The state summary here is that the slide from the pandemic appears to have halted a little bit, particularly around English as a second language and math. Accountability data does show some progress. It's also the first time since 2019 that DESI is reporting full accountability data, so they kind of put that pause button on during the pandemic. So, it's also a tough comp. So, if you read the front page of the Globe, you will see that they use language like "compared to pre-pandemic." Other than quoting someone else, you're not going to hear me phrase it that way. We're not comparing them to the pre-pandemic kids, or whoever they were, because they weren't the same child, nor was their experience similar. We're going to compare them to their most recent data sets, and talk about growth and achievement right now. I'm not going to go back to pre-pandemic world and try to make any soft assumptions. I think that gets a little fuzzy for me. Chronic absenteeism continues to be an issue across the state, and again, the threshold for chronic absenteeism is pretty, well, I don't think it's low, but it's statistically low, two absences a month, which I think is a lot for a child. But some families do not think that's true, and, you know, everything for mental health days for adults and mental health days for kids is real now. So, we have to deal with the fact that the state hasn't adjusted how they define that. Science didn't really change a lot. We do have some groundwork to make up around pre-pandemic, and if you, just historically, if you remember, full tests were done in '19, then they shut it down in '20, then we did half tests in '21, full tests in '22 and '23. So, that's kind of the historical narrative for those of us who weren't taking notes when we lived through it. This is super small. I forced myself to get it on one slide. I apologize. So, this is simply the accountability tiers, so to speak. So, we have overall classifications, districts that require assistance, and districts that are not requiring assistance, and then we have different levels, all the way from insufficient data, all the way up to schools of recognition. And most of my peers and I agree that what you're really trying to get to is you want to live in that substantial progress towards target or above. That's kind of your range. Moderate progress, percentage-wise, is not enough when you talk about meeting the needs of all. So, here, at least in Rockport, we're setting the bar at substantial progress or higher, and if we're not there, then we'll talk about the work that we need to do. Couple more takeaways from the high level. The data does indicate an achievement slide from 2019, but we know that. That's not surprising. The world was different then. Strangely, the science results are relatively unchanged. This is also not surprising that grade-three results signal a need to remain cautious about incoming students who were in pre-K and kindergarten during the pandemic. I mean, that's, you know, the data doesn't tell us anything we didn't know. And obviously, the state results mask district results. So, when they talk about state results, every community is different. Some are way lower, some are way higher. So, we'll talk about Rockport in context in two weeks. Some schools are going to be designated as in compliance, some will be schools of recognition, and some will be marked as underperforming and chronically underperforming. And that list the commissioner is holding on to for another few weeks, just to make sure they've identified people correctly. Here's your little historical timeline of accountability. 1,607 schools were classified for accountability this year. Eighty-three percent of them is not requiring assistance, 17% as requiring assistance, and this is the mini-good news, the mini-celebration that will at least allow ourselves to enjoy until we take a deeper dive. Out of that 1,607 schools, DESI identified only 65 schools of recognition for high achievement, strong growth, and meeting targets. And I received, and Principal Robyn and I received, an email from Erica at DESI just two days ago, and I put it in here for everyone to read, telling us that the middle school was actually identified as a school of recognition for high achievement and strong growth. So, we are one of only 65 schools out of 1,607 who are making the highest level of progress in closing the achievement gap at our school. That is not a small feat, and it's attributed to many, many things. Jody and I will give you a clear dive, but I suspect it's attributed to the work the district did previously with focusing on math and curriculum adoption and instructional practices. I believe it's attributed to the middle school model, and to the fact that we have teams of teachers who get to talk about students every single day in a thoughtful way, in data teams, about the social, emotional, academic needs of the kids. I firmly believe that it's based on the stuff, the professional development, and the people. And I think when those three things come together in the way that they happen to come together right now, we can close that gap. So, it might not mean that we're statistically where we were in 2019, but clearly, according to the state, we've made some serious, serious ground at the middle school. And as Principal Rose says, all that does is set us up for future academic years at the high school. I don't want to ignore the fact that RES and RHS are also identified as substantial progress towards targets, and that is no small feat for a lot of reasons. Theoretically, our youngest learners could, in some people's opinions, have been the most impacted around literacy, around acclamation to school, around doing, school, and socialization, and all of the variables that come into play for our littles. So, the fact that they continue to make substantial progress coming out of the pandemic, I think is pretty good. And remember, the high school only tests once. So, they go through this gauntlet of third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and then, with the exception of some students taking the science M-CAS in ninth grade, the majority of them or all of them are taking ELA and math in 10th grade. So, there's an assessment gap, so to speak, there. And some of the research talks about assessment fatigue over time as well, which I believe is real. And so, with that said, that's where we are at the highest level, basically around accountability and reporting, and Jody and I and the principals and content leaders will spend some quality time really digging into our growth and achievement data in two weeks.
Is there anything any member of the committee wants to get into Mark's ear for consultation with Jody for their presentation? Because I know, one of the bugs I put into Mark's ear is evaluating the data is great, but it's kind of meaningless unless we understand, and what are you going to do with that data? How are you going to remediate against what you see as opportunities? What are there other items that were concerns that you raised?
For the school of recognition with the middle school, congratulations, by the way. That's amazing. Really amazing. The, with that, the message you sent along from Erica, they reran certain accountability metrics. Can you, when you give the data, could you share those metrics, if you have them, if you know what those accountability metrics were?
Yeah.
And if that's a focus of DESI, are those accountability metrics necessarily, I guess, can we get those metrics for different grade levels, or would it be school-wide, or both, maybe?
Both.
So, I wonder if that might be a really good place to kind of dive deep into the results and going forward.
So, in theory, if you're attacking growth and achievement, and if students by cohort and by individual are demonstrating growth against themselves, over time, that equals achievement. You don't, you rarely, if ever, can get one before the other, right in that order. So, you have student growth first. It's one of the few things I like about the M-CAS model is the student growth data, because it compares the child to the child and a cohort of similar children to themselves, instead of kids who are here and here against each other. So, the growth data in Massachusetts is really powerful for me and for us to move districts forward, right? So, one, if we're working on growth, and that leads to achievement, my understanding of how the accountability system works is then your accountability shifts up. What the data helps us understand is the cohorts of students, right? Students from low-income families, students with disabilities. The 11, I think there's 11, don't quote me until I give the presentation, but the 11 various...
So, I think attendance is included in that.
It is. Chronic absenteeism is a big one.
Yeah, that's a metric. So, that would be a, you know...
I will tell you, we did not gain the maximum points there, for example.
Right, so that would be a thing I think is worth looking at, is going forward.
Yep.
How can we address that issue?
Yep.
For sure.
Yep. So, I will, the presentation will be in two chunks. It'll be an accountability section, and then there'll be a growth and achievement section. Any other thoughts? And, Mr. Chair, you did ask for not just the narrative report, but some kind of bar graph and comp on the cohort. So, we will be able, that was kind of an unrealistic thing to put together last year, because they paused all the data. This is probably the first time we can do that, so Jody and I will throw that together for you as well.
And so, will school councils and school improvement planning happen with this data in front of them? Is that the idea, that the M-CAS data is tied back into school improvement planning?
It will. It will inform the decision-making around professional development, around curriculum review and adoption, and around instructional practice work.
Yeah, thank you.
So, to what level the council gets the nitty-gritty data versus the high-level why? A lot of times, we'll focus on the M-CAS as one of the whys. Yep.
Great. So, you had a small enrollment update, I believe?
So, we don't need a ton of conversation unless you feel like we need it tonight. Mr. Chair, I just put this in here because we know that on October 1st, right, everything's real, and so Amanda back there will be finishing our October 1st report. This is something I'm keeping my eye on, and principals and I are looking at, as we start to think about scheduling, and as we start to think about capital improvement and ultimately budgeting and programming. So, I'm looking at this data much earlier than I did as a first-year superintendent last year, and I put it next to the NESDEC projection that we used in our budget, just to show you that we're actually a little above the projected number. So, I don't know what that means, quite honestly. I don't have an opinion either way. It's just fact that we, you know, we have a few extra kids. And if you comp last year's numbers to this year's numbers, we had 743 overall students, and we're just a tick below 700 now, and that does jive with the declining enrollment across the state. People having less children. Massachusetts is an expensive place to live and raise children, et cetera, et cetera. So, nothing new in the narrative, but I just, I put it in there just to let you know that it's on my radar now, and then I'll have almost probably the same slide again with just the final October 1st numbers for that meeting after we have our data. The only interesting conversation will be that we're going to keep looking very carefully at our school choice numbers. If you remember, we were trying to break even. We broke even. We lost, we graduated, lost, we graduated 20-some-odd school choice students from the senior class last year. We actually had more than that 20-some-odd number come into the district, but our numbers in total of school choice are down. So, we're digging into that data to figure out why, and there's going to be a lot of reasons when we start to talk about affordable housing. And so, some families would come in on choice, but then ultimately move into Rockport. So, that's a big win for the community. But what's our estimated number, $10,000? Am I making that number up roughly?
It's $5,000 per child statewide, and then there's a special ed increment for those that are on IEPs, and it's a very complex formula.
So, let's stay with the simple. So, you know, if we were getting, you know, roughly $5,000 from a sending district, and all of a sudden, that family moved into Rockport, it's a win for the town and the tax base. They get way more than $5,000, but then we don't, the budget doesn't get that money. So, we're going to dig into that and try to figure out where that anomaly happened, or were the eighth graders who went back to a tech school or back to their sending high school for reasons?
Right.
I don't know to what extent. I'll have clean data on that, but we'll do our best. And that is where we are, and the finance update was basically our capital ask, and that you're going to tell us that the town is finally rocking and rolling with closing out the FY23 year.
Yes. So, the grants, as Martha explained, and you explained the capital. The other fact is shout-out of thanks and appreciation to the accounting department at Town Hall. Debbie Gillis and her staff have moved mountains in posting all the journal entries and closeouts, transfers needed to start the process of closing out the town books for fiscal '23. So, I hope to have at least a rough fund flow for you next meeting for the end of last year. So far, so good, and what I'm seeing. This also now allows me to start reporting, doing our end-of-year financial and pupil data report that's required by the state. I can now use that data that Town Hall has entered, and we can start reporting on that. That's about it. On those things, you would probably get a, there's really nothing to report in September, July, the first quarter for you, because we're just setting things up, and the staff isn't even, the majority of the staff isn't here. But I may be able to give you a glance at the end of October on where we hope to be, or maybe get some numbers in on circuit breaker in school choice estimates after the enrollment reports are, so we can maybe plan to see if we're on track at that point. But that would be more at the end of next month.
Great. School committee discussion. I had a question, actually, Amy, because you went on your tour of the school, and of course, you're a fresh set of eyes, unlike many of us who have been walking through those halls for many years. Any impressions or observations?
I was really impressed by what beautiful, bright, and shiny learning spaces we have for students. I could see the impact of the work that was done over the summer to get the old carpet out and to put tiles on those floors. I thought that was a great project. I'm talking, I guess, about nuts and bolts, but I understand why we're excited about lighting for the second half of the building. I understand why we're excited about window shades. Those things will make the learning environment so much more positive. I saw students who appeared to be happy to be in school, teachers who appeared to be happy to be in school, right? I saw the new spaces at the middle school. I saw many, many classrooms ready to go. I've never seen so many twinkly lights around classroom boards. Very, very sweet. We saw some beautiful new whiteboards. We saw some great STEM spaces, and I'm excited that the town meeting approved the $58,000 for a preschool playground. I think that's a great win for kids. So, I thought it was a great tour, and I appreciated how much time people spent. I felt a little bit bad about that. It was a couple hours that we took. I walked with each principal, with the superintendent, through those three schools, and I really appreciated it. If you haven't had this tour, and you can get on the calendar, I really recommend that you do it. I really recommend that you do it, because I suspect there was a lot of work done over the summer. And I don't know how you'd see an elementary level unless you got to go to a back-to-school night or something like that. So I thought things looked good. And I said, I think Rockport schools needs to ask early and often for the things that will make this building more inviting for our community, a better place for teaching and learning. We have some classrooms that are pretty warm, and then we have some that have air conditioning units. And it's our job to raise our voice on behalf of kids and teachers to do everything we can for them. And so I commend the work you've done so far to ask, and I look forward to seeing a nice, long list for the coming year. Thank you.
Great.
Kathy joined us just yesterday. All my ideas are pouring together. I don't know.
Yeah. It was, and I'm an old hat, you know. I've been in all the schools for years and years. It was nice to see the new rooms, the new upgrades. I think that, you know, you don't really think about it, but you have a nice place to work, you have a nice place to learn, really affects your attitude. Things are thought out. And even if you didn't get your thing that you really, really need, you know that you can ask, you know, you can make your pitch, and you can, you know that people are looking to see what could help you do your job better. It was really great to see the STEM rooms, the engineering. Oh, my gosh. That was great. Like, I loved seeing that. So.
Must be like a real transformation of that room.
It really is. And that was an exciting thing. Like, when Morgan first started, my youngest first started high school, she, it really encompassed all the things. She was really excited about the engineering and the 3D printers and the car, but then she's a music kid, so she could never get those classes. So everything that we're talking about now, we probably have all seen in real life. And it's nice to see it kind of trying to tackle those huge, those mountains, but there really are just big hills. Right?
Right.
There's this thing about how do you eat an elephant, right? But you have to intend to eat the elephant, right, before you eat it one bite at a time. And I think our students have access to wonderful spaces right now, but I do think we need to keep asking, and we need to put it out there. And one of the saddest things, I think, is the system where people no longer ask because they are so sure that the answer will be no, and we must never become that system. We have to continue to ask and sort of bang the table on behalf of our students and our teachers and our staff, all of us, and never say, no, we shouldn't do that, that's too much. What will people think? That's our job.
How can we do it? How good we do it? You know, trying to figure out what has to happen in order, what has to happen in order for it to happen.
I think every time we tell our story, every time we show people the wonderful things that are happening, it's easier for people to support. I think those STEM logs, as you say, they're great.
So one thought for those who haven't taken the tour, but maybe have either children in various schools right now, or have been through these hallways a lot, our superintendent is always waiting for us to have this meeting between the end of the school day. So, Mark, that might be another option where, and maybe that's, you know, less invasive for all of us taking tours. If, you know, you're a teacher as well, Mark, so it's pretty difficult to come here, I would imagine, during the school day. But just getting a look at what's gone on over the summer might be a real treat. Okay. Do we have a need for executive session?
We do not.
My, so do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you.